It's time for the meeting to start, so I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody that's here. We're glad to have people that are interested in our county to be at these meetings and hear firsthand what's going on and make up decisions of what you think we're doing because you heard something at the coffee shop this morning. At any rate, let's proceed. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you stand for a little prayer.
Amen. Father, we thank you for this day and everything you've given us. We've been blessed with the rain and we thank you for that. And now we're thanking you for a little sunshine to get a little drying time. We hope that you stay with everybody here today and make sure they get home safe and be with our troops as we take care of our freedoms. Thank you. Amen.
Praise be to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't play out long this agenda this morning. There's a discussion and presentation from William, Benat and Butler to conduct a mineral interest title opinion on all property owned by the Karnes County presented by Clinton Butler.
Your Honor, move this.
Sure. Thank you.
Round two. We were here last week and we're able to present and introduce some of the commissioners the proposed mineral title opinion that we propose to conduct for the mineral interests that are owned by Karnes County. And I'll just start from the beginning if that's okay with the commissioner. And, you know, I know this will be repetitive to a lot of folks, but I think it's imperative that we're all on the same page going forward. Back in late 2014, I was approached by County Attorney Herb Hancock regarding the mineral interests that are owned by the Karnes County. And in our discussions, it became quite apparent that the county just did not have an accurate feel for what mineral interest the county owned underneath the property of Karnes County. County Attorney Hancock asked me what our firm would be able to do to be able to help the county to gain an understanding of what mineral interests it did own and then if there were any discrepancies either in the leases that those minerals were subject to or any discrepancies in the deed by which we acquired those mineral interests, we would be able to work that out as well. And so I developed a four-phase plan and presented it to County Attorney Hancock regarding how I would go about first determining what mineral interests the county did own and then setting out to make sure that the county was being paid correctly, both under the leases and under the deeds by which we acquired those minerals. The four-phase plan first started off with gathering those documents that would be necessary in order for us to form a title opinion. And since we were starting literally at square one, that would require us to hire a landman office. And the landman office that I recommend and that I think is head and shoulders the best one in this county is K.L. W. Lake's office. And so we contacted K.L. W. Lake's office, flying through its manager, Chris Lake, and asked them to submit us a bid. And we attached that bid to a letter that I sent to County Attorney Hancock. The second phase would be for us to render a title opinion once we had gotten all the run sheets and title documents acquired by K.L. W. Lake's office for any and all mineral interests owned by the county. We would then form that title opinion as to what our belief based upon those documents is, as to what the county owns mineral-wise underneath these certain properties. We would then compare that title opinion prepared by this office to the title opinions of the oil and gas companies that hold the leases on those mineral interests. If they coincided and the oil and gas companies had the same title opinion that we did, then there would be no reason to have any dispute. If there was a conflict, then we would approach the commissioner and, you know, let them know, here's what our opinion is as to title underneath this certain tract. Here's how it compares to the title opinion set forth by the oil and gas company. And the commissioners would be able to then make the decision as to whether or not we needed to file some sort of declaratory judgment action in order to attempt to get a court to render that we had the more correct interpretation of the conveyance act. Another aspect that would need to be conducted would be a lease audit. We'd need to go through any and all oil and gas leases that our mineral interests would be subject to and make sure that those mineral interests were being paid correctly. You know, was the oil and gas industry or oil and gas company deducting costs that shouldn't be deducted pursuant to the lease terms? Were they putting us in units that were too large as compared to what the terms of the lease said? Were they conducting certain drilling operations beyond a Q plus? You know, those certain aspects that would need to be analyzed and then presented to the court and this commissioner and court to then make a decision on what sort of actions they would like for us to take based upon our analysis of these leases. So those were the operations that I informed Attorney Hancock that we performed in the letter that I sent to him dated February 18th, 2015. I was informed by Attorney Hancock that the four-phase plan had been approved and we then immediately began operations and contracted with K.L. W. Lake's office, who then began its title search and started conducting its record search and provided us run sheets on several properties. The commissioner, or K.L. W. Lake's office to this point, and I've submitted this document to the commissioner's court, so far has identified 142 fee tracts that need mineral title ownership assessments. They've also identified 161 fee roadway tracts that would need mineral title ownership assessment. So far, in the acreage under 99 of the 142 fee ownership tracts, they've discovered a total of 86.7 acres, mineral acres. Of the 161 fee roadway tracts, they've identified 53 of those tracts having a total of 154 acres. Now, that comes to roughly a total of 230 acres of the tracts that have been assessed to this point. What the mineral ownership in those tracts are at this point, we cannot tell you because we've not done a mineral title opinion on those tracts. However, when you compare that number, you know, 230 acres, to the number of acres that we were given, well, let me back up a little bit. County Attorney Hancock, when this project started, handed me a packet and said, this is all of the knowledge that we know as to what we own in and on the property under Karnes County. And so we totaled up the acreage based upon the memorandums of leases that made up this packet, and it came to 26.6 acres. So right now, the county knows about 26 acres of minerals that it owns underneath this county. And just in the brief work done by K.L. W. Lake's office, we've already identified at least 230 acres. So there is a chunk of acreage, possibly a large chunk of acreage, that's out there that the county does not know about. And it's possible the county's not getting its revenue on those acres. And it's possible that if it is getting its revenue, it certainly doesn't know whether or not that revenue is being paid correctly under any oil and gas leases that those acreage are subject to. So with that in mind, my firm continues to believe that it's imperative this county conducts a thorough and exhaustive search of its assets as far as mineral ownership goes in order so that it, at the very least, can be able to inform its citizens as to what acreage this county has and at the best, that it can pursue some revenue streams that it is currently not achieving. And with that, I'll be free to answer any questions on any of the documents I've submitted to the court.
You said that you, we all identified just briefly 230 acres. Of those 230 acres, are you saying that those 230 acres could possibly be the county's or someone else's? Or was a portion of the county's? How does that go forward?
Well, as far as what ownership we own of those 230, we don't know at this point because we've not analyzed the documents, we've not done a title opinion on those tracts. But what I am saying is that K.L. W. Lake's office has identified that the county has some ownership in those 230 acres. What that ownership is at this point, I can't tell you.
It could be a large portion, it could be a small portion, but the county has some kind of ownership in that?
Yes, sir. I think Chris Rock of K.L. W. Lake's can back me up on that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Does this 230 acres include the prison property?
I have to go back. Commissioner, I have to look into the emergency state. I think it possibly does, but I have to confirm that for sure. I have to go back.
Because that's a large tract of land that's only in gas production. Does this, okay, y'all identified quite a few acreage further than that 230, and the other acreage y'all included is the county road. Is that correct? The lot, I figured it was about 500 ton acres, and that was included on the county road. But if we don't get mineral interests from now, we won't until 2017, a part of the law that just passed.
Of the tracts, 161 tracts are fee roadway tracts. That's correct. They're the county road tracts. And yes, this county would not be able to realize any mineral interests under, or realize any wealth under those tracts until 2017. However, 2017 will get here and we will want to know what ownership we have under those tracts because as of right now, there's not been a lot of drill-out in the past six months of any unit. If oil prices were to go back up in the next two years to $80, $90, which is possible, then the drill-outs would begin heavily again under those tracts, at which time we'd want to know what mineral interests we have under those tracts because we'd want to make sure that we participate in any initial production of any wells that those tracts are subject The regular, just, you know, lots and blocks and property tracts, there's 142 tracts. Of those, 99 have been identified with acreage. So there's 43 that we don't even know the acreage on yet because we ceased our rushes until we could have a decision by this body.
I have a map here that came probably from the land office in Texas. And if you look at the county road leases in Karnes County, they're marked and they are quite minimal. There's not many. So I'm going to make the assumption that a lot of these roadways, minerals were retained by either adjacent landowners or something, or for whatever reason, they're not available to the county because there are hot areas that are in this area, on this map, and the roads adjacent to them are not leased. So would that be an incorrect assumption that perhaps the county does not even own the mineral interests under a substantial portion of these roads?
Well, I think that the roads that we identified and that we've presented as being part of the 142, or 161 fee roadway tracts are tracts in which the documents would, you know, and this is prior to us conducting a title opinion. So yes, this is all assumption and conjecture at this point. But I believe that K.L. W. Lake's office has identified 161 roadway tracts that we have some interest in. I informed them that I do not want to see any tracts that we only have surface on the end because that's outside the bounds of the scope of this project. And additionally, I told them to not do any, any tracts in which we just had a right-of-way or an easement because no minerals would have been conveyed to us in this sort of right-of-way or easement. So the only tracts I'm concerned about and the only tracts I've asked them to identify are those tracts in which it appears that we have an apparent mineral interest to this day. And as far as what the GLO has informed us of, I think K.L. W. Lake's office does a lot of the work with the GLO and they might be able to explain this better, but the GLO only knows what we tell them. And at this point, we can only tell them about 26.65 acres of the water.
Well, my experience with oil companies is that when they do a division order, that there is very little missed. If there's a bunch of nitpicking lawyers in the world, they work for the oil companies with title opinions. So my personal thought is it would be very difficult for the county or for any landowner for that matter not to be included in something. We constantly see suits in the paper where they're trying to clear titles on unknown landowners in order to get the payments made and get them out of escrow. So, you know, I find it difficult to believe that an oil company is knowingly withholding anything because they're liable and culpable, you know, they have a certain amount of culpability if they do so. Now, you know, if there's something out there that everybody missed, that'd be it. But I, you know, if there's a lease on a piece of property or a lease adjacent to it or anything else, from my own personal point of view, it looks to me like they've done a tremendous job of researching it, so.
Commissioner, may I interject just a second? One of the issues has brought this where it is at this time was Judge Long was faced with a ton of division orders and he had absolutely no, I bring a division order in and say, Judge Long, this is a division order. That's all he's got. And so as a result of that, I'll let Judge Long tell you what he said to me. That generated this thing. We're getting checks every day from, and we're just giving it a little water. That's about as far as we got, you know? And that's just, and nobody knew, and nobody knows why those checks, we don't have a, we can't find the leases on some of them, you know? So, you know, those are the kind of things that generated this request. And I went to the law firm and asked them, Judge Long talked to me, to do this, you know, how much it would cost and what to do. And that's basically where we were. And that's the reason we're here at this time because the division orders, it takes a lot of work to make sure that you've got a right spot. And to trust an oil company is like trusting the government sometime there, right? But a lot of times they're down.
Well, I think the oil company would provide the lease if you asked them or they were giving you the check. And I think they'd be more happy to provide the lease to the county. This is how we got through. One, I understand you said that we don't even know if they have a lease, but if you just went to the oil company to provide them a check, they would probably be more happy to accept it.
I'm not questioning in the lease that there may be some discrepancies. I guess I'm back to the cost benefit ratio. We're looking at three-quarter of a million dollars with really no guarantee that we will come out in the long run ahead. At seven months, I believe, Loana said we had received about $160,000. On that basis, we'll get about $250,000 for the year. It would take us three years of our current payments just to defray the cost of doing this. So, you know, I'm not big on contingency fees, but if I were, I would say this is something should be done on a contingency fee. And so if you get something, you get something out of it. But, you know, I would say I don't think that could be done anyway.
All right. I agree with David that the, he said his last statement, that all companies are very diligent in checking this out before they do a lease. And they've already paid K.L. to do this stuff on a lot of them, and I think they are very tough on the drug. Okay. If in this process you find differences of opinion from the oil and gas companies, where would we go from there? To court and to litigation?
Yes, sir. What it would take would be a declaratory judgment action. What we do is we give the title opinion of the oil and gas company, find out what is their assessment of the mineral title things. And if there is a discrepancy or if we got a different interpretation of a deed than the oil and gas company, sue would be brought against the person that they are paying that discrepancy amount to. So let's say, for example, that there's a deed in which the oil and gas company says that all the minerals are reserved in Commissioner Yauer's. But our interpretation is, is that no, actually, there was no reservation that Commissioner Yauer actually sold the county all of these minerals. Well, then we'd bring suit against Commissioner Yauer and have the court interpret that particular deed to say that, no, Commissioner Yauer, you did not reserve the minerals. It was actually conveyed to the county. So that's the kind of lawsuit that we're proposing.
At this time, on all these roads that we, we're not going to receive anything until 2017, I think it is, I don't think it's proper to go for a whole scope of this thing, but all of them, I feel like, if you feel like, if we identify anything that we have a lease on and there's production and we're getting a check and we want it checked out, that it should be done on a plot-by-plot basis. So not go for 100 of them or 100.30 of them, I mean, it's going to be all at one time.
If the commission would just like to point us to particular pieces of property, that's fine, but the problem is this county doesn't know which tracts, you know? So that was the whole point of getting with K.L. W. Lake's office is, I asked her, okay, well, give me the deeds for your property and we'll analyze those deeds, we'll then analyze the leases that they're subject to, and we'll go from there. And I was presented with these documents and told that this is all we know. So the problem, and I would agree with you, if we did know what tracts we own, this would be a very more streamlined process. The problem is, is that we don't know which tracts we own. Now, if the court just wants us to go on a track-by-track basis, we could certainly do that. The court would just need to provide us direction as to which tracts it wanted us to look at. And at this point, I don't believe, and I think Herb would back this up, that the court doesn't have the knowledge base to be able to point us to any tracts.
I would make a recommendation. Since 2010, I have been in conversation with Judge Fowler in DeWitt County, and there is no better resource you can go to regarding any issues with deeds, royalties, minerals, any type of road issues. He fought endlessly for 1747. He's fought endlessly. He is the absolute go-to when you go to state legislation regarding the road and mineral, the roads with the mineral and royalty issue interests. He actually gave me the map from the GLO. He refers to the GLO on a regular basis. He has maps on his wall in his office. And he calculated to the T, which I don't have the document in front of me, of how much money we would receive off of our county roads while parts were deeded to us off of the GLO map. To a T, which he was fighting for, the new bill of SB 951 and HB 2521 to be retroactive to 2010, and he gave me to the T how much we would get, which was, you know, not a whole lot if we did it retroactive. Now, unfortunately, the legislation not only didn't make it retroactive, they pushed it out to 2017. But that being said, I find it very difficult to believe that he is able to calculate exactly how much Karnes County would get, exactly how much DeWitt and Karnes County have on a borderline issue in productive wells underneath the roads and how much DeWitt gets to. And he knows it to the cent if he didn't know exactly what roads were deemed county and what roads were deemed not county. And it is a matter of, an issue in the GLO, and that's how he has fought for it since 2010. So I doubt there would be much discrepancy on those.
And I would refer to K.L. W. Lake's office as to what knowledge the GLO has, as to what Karnes does and does not know, based upon my conversations with K.L. W. Lake's office. The GLO only knows what we tell them and what is reported to them from land offices and.
Right. When you go to take a lease on a county road, it used to be, five years ago, we took it from the county and then they had the ruling that the GLO, or the state got all the money. And when you go and lease a roadway from the GLO, they want to know two things. Do you have the leases on either side of the road? And the third thing they want to know is what you paid. And they will take the same offer. Now, they don't warrant title in a road because it's not like to go. You know, it's not even high through or under, whatever, you pay them. They get, and they're not going to give you back. If you're going to lease B acres from the state, say, under an admissible stream, river, lake, it's a different, a different setup. That's by bid basis only. And they have, I think it's every quarter, they have a bid and you have to go and submit written bids. The roadways are pretty likely, because so many on the roadways, it can get into title. A lot of times, the county might have assigned the state a grant of a right-of-way. There's no, no fee.
I understand your project, but there's a couple of issues that have not yet been answered. One, you made a statement that you were approached by Attorney Hancock to do a service for the county. And that he had told you that the project had been approved. I would like to know who approved the project.
I'd leave that to Attorney Hancock. The only thing that was approved, I signed a letter with the office for him to do the workup. There were two documents, the document that I signed, then there was a second document that the county had to sign as far as this project is concerned, how much it cost. Let's see, written right here at the time. The first one I signed, Judge Long telling me to go over there and talk to him. The letter agreement as to how much they charged for Al is basically what you were doing. You did a workup and the document, the second document, Bush by the judge's signature, and that's the judge's signature and the commissioner's court, and that's what we're talking about.
Was this, I guess my next question then would be, I don't recall an agenda where this particular subject was brought before the commissioner's court and approved by the commissioner's court. Now, I may have been absent that particular day, so I'm asking the court if you approve this project. The second issue that you had, I'm fairly certain I'm correct, is there's no money in the budget for this, not in the current budget. Would that be a fair statement?
Not to the tune that they're talking about. There's money for special counsel, but there's not.
Up to $800,000, thereabouts. So we have, we have a couple of issues that have to be addressed. And I would suspect, and I'm not in the oil business nor do I know anything about the oil business, but I am a participant in the deal for shale to a very small degree. But I do know that the oil companies, when they perform the title search, I'm fairly confident that they have a battery of attorneys who specialize in oil and gas leases, who somebody, at least one of those attorneys, provides a title opinion to the oil company prior to issuing a division order.
That's correct.
My question then would be, why are we doing the same thing twice, which could cost us, quite frankly, NHS of $800,000?
The answer is that the county can have the accurate assessment of what the county owns. You're asking the county to trust the oil and gas companies that they're doing the correct job. And in my practice, my practice is based primarily upon confronting oil and gas companies with their assessments of either contracts, title opinions, or just the work that they're doing on a piece of property. Most of my clients hire me because the oil and gas companies are not doing what they're supposed to do. supposed to do. And that is why, you know, my father started this business down here, was because, so that we could represent citizens of this county in their negotiations and in their litigations against oil and gas companies. I would tell you that while, yes, the oil and gas companies do hire batteries of attorneys, mistakes have been made, both on title opinions, on lease reviews, and on operations. And so I'm sure many of the oil and gas companies would appreciate your trust in them, but based upon my practice and my experience, I don't share that trust.
Well, with that said, I think that perhaps the commissioner's court may want to go back to square one and make sure that we're doing this correctly, because I think the original, I'm not saying that we don't need it, I'm not saying that, I don't think we proceeded properly, and I think you have probably, you and Mr. Lake, have incurred some expenses.
Yes, sir.
Unless somebody can show me where there's been a commissioner's court that's approved the project prior to them performing the service. I'm not saying that we shouldn't pay you for your service, don't misunderstand me that I am saying that. I'm saying that I don't believe that the commissioner's court has approved what hasn't been done up until today. And whether your services are accepted or not, I think the commissioner's court needs to do due diligence and go back and try this doing, try and doing this the right way, instead of just not performing due diligence. Thank you.
What do you suggest is the right way, just so we have an idea?
First, it had, I guess this would be basically, excuse me, this would probably be step one, approving the project, but that's not on here. I think Mr. Hancock, Attorney Hancock, probably through goodwill, and trying to do the right thing, wanted to get it done quick, just got ahead of the ballgame, and the project should have been brought before the commissioner's court before he approached the firm. I'm not saying that it was a bad thing, I'm just saying the procedure wasn't followed, which essentially makes, but had been accomplished to date, null and void. So somehow, we've got to make this right and follow the rules, and if the services are accepted, then that's, that's the decision of the commissioner's court. But there have been a number of instances since I've been coming to this court where people just do things, and then they bring it to the commissioner's court. And now we're essentially committing a fraud.
That's absolutely not right.
And please, sir.
There's nothing, this is not a meeting to make decisions. It's a discussion workshop meeting. And the only thing that is up for discussion was conduct in a mineral interest title thing on this property owned by a foreign county, that Clinton had committed. And we haven't done anything on it. We haven't made a decision of any kind on it. Just whatever you're implying that is done, has been done, because we haven't done anything on it yet.
Yes, sir, but the next, the next item is to discuss or disprove. I'm just saying that...
That's a regular meeting, which we'll have after this thing is...
Right.
And we haven't done anything on it either, as far as that.
And I apologize if I got ahead of myself.
Clint, in your, in your letter that you, your cover letter that we received, there's a section in there that says about the size, the county would have to determine the size of the tract of land. Now, what is, I mean, I have no knowledge of anything to do with land and ore, gas, or anything like that, other than I put it in my truck and get run. But what's the large acre, what's considered a large acre, tract, one acre, or...
We were, we asked that question to Attorney Hancock. We were informed that there was no size limit that we were to look at any possible tract.
Shelby, maybe a little help is that the county's going to have a bunch of fractional interests in, in tax sale property that may have been city lots that they had an interest in, and such as that over the last few years. So there'd be some, probably substantial number of fractional interests.
I would agree with that. I mean, if you look at the 99 feet tracts that we've looked at, we've identified 86 total acres. So, you know, feet tracts are going to be, based upon my conversations with Chris Rock, a lot of lots, blocks, and stuff like that.
I'd say one comment about this, this is a curious experience that I had a brief time as a county judge. I had a division order brought to me, I had a couple of leases brought to me, the checks were becoming wrong, the checks, and I never knew, you know, I own mineral interest myself, and I know what I have. I've done the research, I've got title opinions, and I've read up, and I understand what my interests are. And it's an unusual experience for me, serving as county judge, I get checks by the way, particularly with lots or blocks or far. I would ask for information, but I never received any. Now, if one thing the county could use, and it's not just for right now, it's for here on out, a central repository or some kind of a database that has all that information so that in the future, when some company is out there making leases, you can go to it right there, and there you can find out what you've got, you can understand where it is, what configurations around it are. You can better be able to negotiate a lease on the county. You can better be able to understand, on this Indian division orders, I was shooting in the dark. I had, I had no way to know what their interest is. And I've known for as long as I've had, kind of the same experience, but that was mine. And, you know, I'm, I do a lot of oil and gas practices or anything, and the things I needed to know to be able to adequately sign off or accuse the sound of division orders, I did not know, and I could not know. I did, I know it was my own mineral interest, but I didn't know about the county's. And I felt very uncomfortable agreeing to things, signing leases, agreeing to division orders, with the level of knowledge I had and was able to entertain. And, you know, the county will have to determine whether or not the cost benefit, and commissioner Reynolds, that's a very good way to look at it, is what's the cost benefit ratio on this, how much we're going to gain from this. That is a little bit of an unknown, I guess.
Yeah.
But I do think it's a, it's a one-time thing that the county has to decide and want to make, where we're going to corral our mineral interests, we're going to know what they are, we're going to know how to negotiate future leases, we're going to know how to follow our warranty payments, whether they're being paid correctly. And that was kind of the idea that I thought the county might want to consider. I can't tell you whether or not there's going to be a definite benefit analysis, you know, that'd say, well, it was worth its cost. But knowing, actually getting a repository of information that will tell you a plan that you can go to and find out what your mineral interests are, I think would be helpful for every one of you to form your jobs correctly. And it may also, may also have some cash inflow benefit that, you know, if mineral interests are being determined wrong or something like that. And nobody knows that for sure, but as far as the infallibility of the oil companies' calculations, I would not vouch for that. They do try in most instances, you know, there are some that don't, but they do try to allocate their role to be as correctly. But we have found in our years of experience that there's lots and uncertainty out there in mineral ownerships. I've had oil and gas title opinions, I've seen the wood contract and won judgment, I guess, you know, they were in. So, but I think overall, this is to benefit the county from having a big one-time effort to gather together all the information about their mineral interest and have it available to this county judge, to the next county judge, this set of commissioners, to the next set of commissioners, from there on out. And what would be required to keep it accurate is to beat the track, any kind of transactions that take place in the future that change those interests, that make a difference. Those should be reported in this, in this database as well.
I can understand Judge Butler's comments on this. I think most of us that have rural property that have been blessed with Eagle Ford activity, and I know I do, I have every piece of correspondence, every, everything in a file that I keep with me almost all the time. If there's any question, if it gets to be too much legalese, I do go to someone and ask, is this right, or should it be done this way, or what have you? So the fact that the county does not have this information, that it was not amassed if you would have it as the leases were being done, does make it very difficult for Judge Long and the court to function. I like to say, my, my concern is the cost and what we'll come out with. Hopefully, we would gain something. I know the oil companies, certainly their first priority is to CYA, to cover their own butt, to make sure that, that if possible, they aren't caught. They're not worried about yours as much as they are theirs, but in doing that, they usually do. That having been said, Luana, how would, if we decided, if the court decided to do this, how would this be budgeted? How could it be handled? What time period, from the standpoint of the law firm and Lake's firm, would we be talking about, in other words, are we talking about a year's worth of work? Are we talking about six months' worth? So we would know how, we would have to be able to come up with the money.
Technically, I only count the dollars. I don't legally determine those kind of things. That would be more of a question for Mr. Hancock, or Judge Butler, or Clinton, but there are provisions for amending the budget, either in emergency or in the best interest of the citizens of the entity. So if monies were going to be expended now that exceed our current budget for special counsel, then I would think the court could amend for any expenditures, or we can put it in next year's budget and just have them not start anything until next year.
Next year, May, October.
October 1.
Yeah.
And you're, okay, this is based on research down to this point in your documents you have. What were, he said official records search, and that's, he says approximately estimated 50 days to complete, at a, at a cost of $450 a day, including expenses equated to $22,500. What does a record search give us?
I'm going to let Chris Rock go to K.L.
As far as the record searches, running the indexes in the county office and the district and the court's office to see all the documents that the county has been needed, acquired over from the very beginning of time up till, you know, yesterday.
From sovereignty to current.
And that provides us with the basis by which we can then get my oil and gas attorneys at my firm, my real estate attorneys, to begin injecting the title search. It provides us the foundational documents by which we can then give our title opinions to this body, and so that we can inform this body as what it does and does not own underneath the land in Park County.
If the court, if the court chose, chooses to start currently, or, you know, to go ahead and move forward with this at this time, this is strictly hypothetical, between now and the 1st of October, could you come up or give us any kind of a thumbnail guess as to what the cost might be to know whether, I'm not much on budget amendments. I like to think things are done, quote, right the first time, although I know emergencies do come up. As Luana said, if it's in the best interest of the citizenry, that's just cause, and I understand that. But could you tell us where we might be cost-wise over the next, what, four months?
Will this be completed, will your work be completed before that?
It depends on what the, you know, commissioner's court decides.
Let's say, let's say hypothetically, we were given the green light to go and total this project. Would your work on this project be completed by the title search?
You could, as far as, you're talking about running follow-up, you're talking about disaster taking, the title of the insurance.
Getting the work done, we shared the mail with mineral ownership.
Clint, what's the gentleman's name?
Chris Brock.
Chris Brock.
It'd be great to get it done, but I mean, Clint's on his court, wants to do it, you know, we'd be certain of his mind, but he'd have to get it done for months.
Judge is one of the man was.
Oh, that's Chris Brock, he's the general manager of K.L. W. K.L. W., he's the general manager of K.L. W.
The buck stops on his best sleeve.
If I may approach Judge Long. Sure. He's been K.L. W. Lake's point man on this project up to this point.
Shelby brought up a point that might be well-taken at this point in the budget cycle, would be to go forward with only a portion of it. That would be the official record search, which would give us some indication where we're headed. The cost estimate is fairly nominal on that, and if, if it looked like it was based on the information that was developed in a, quote, quick assessment, if it looked like it was worthwhile going further from that, perhaps that would be beneficial. Maybe this is not something that can be done, but it would perhaps give the court, as well as the citizenry, an idea whether it was, again, justifiable in the long run, is that something can be done, or is that...
Well, you can't leave out the district court of where there's lawsuits, whether it be a tax sale or lawsuits that, a judgment against the property, whether, you've got to have the full picture. You won't, you won't know what you have.
This, this is always going to be changing, right? The ownership of property, the person of tax sale, we're always acquiring property and selling property, so this is not going to be a book or a document. You open up into other commissioners after y'all are said and gone, you know, or he, what Richard pointed out, I mean, this is a constant moving part.
It's going to have to be, you know, every time there's a document that's county land...
That's right.
Richard said it needed to be put in, with that information.
Right.
I had an idea of a database you could start, start off, but at this point, the results of this search, in certain criteria, how and what gets input to a future reference, you know.
But it's always moving. It's not to use your example of your property. You said your property, I have property. Mine doesn't change unless I add a piece and I go and put that in the book. This is a constant moving target because of the way they acquire lands and properties, and they sell them, and retain mineral interest, which I don't know if that's even or not, or... We would certainly recommend, you know, on a somewhat regular cycle, just conducting an update of the records, but, you know, that's going to be just such a fraction of what the cost of the initial work...
You know, say if you did it every year, every year you'd go and have an update made. The expense of doing that, I assume would be fairly low, because you don't have to go back to just start and let the...
And you've got your basic knowledge of the one tracks you own. You're not having to invent the wheel as to what one track's going to be. I think it was presented to them like they would have just a document, and they could just fit the previous commissioners, and they're going, and new ones could look at it, but it's going to be a continuing thing. It will need to be updated, so they understand.
Be accurate, it has to be updated every day. I mean, the rest of it, you just blow it smoke, if you don't do it every day.
What would the official record search identify? All the property that the county owns? All the property that's impaired prior to tax search?
All the property that is of record here at the county, as far as that the, either the district clerk's or county police office, you know, that the county owns. I mean, that they have an interest in.
Including county...
Sir? Sir?
Include, that's all lots of tracks, including county roads?
Yes.
Identify all of them?
Yes, but it's only gonna identify what county possibly owns, and it's not the mineral that it shows.
Not the mineral interest that would identify them as just what they own.
And, and, I mean, a lot of the, Mr. Howard, a lot of the tracks don't have an acreage figure, and so those acreage figures would have to be calculated.
Any of the, any of the searches of the land would cover whatever the court asked to be covered by the search, and different people do different type searches, and we can sit in here and talk about what it would be, and whatever you want to talk about, but unless you specifically identify what you're doing and what you're searching for, you're not gonna have an accurate search for any reason when you get through. I've done this for 50 years here at Praxton Law, and I know a little bit about it. I don't represent the county and will not represent the county, but you, you actually gotta identify what you're trying to do, and then do whatever you're trying to do should be shown, and unless you do it that way, you're not gonna know what you got when you get through. We're in a workshop at this point, and discussing this matter of what we think needs to be done, and we have not made any decisions, and will not make final decisions in this part of the meeting tonight. So, with that said, any of the courts have anything else to contribute to this? Their vast knowledge of what we're talking about?
If the record search will show us what we own, as well as we can identify, you know, if it would tell us what minerals we probably should be, I mean, we own, I think it's to our advantage that we at least do a record search and see where it takes us. I mean, we have money in the contingency fund, and also the $22,000 is just a little bit. I don't know, I'm just asking what, what you're thinking, but I think we, I don't think we know what we own, period.
I think you're probably right.
Mr. Lake, would we be able to get an accurate picture of what our ownership was by just conducting the official record search?
No, and I, you're gonna need to go district court.
Well, you gotta look at the whole set of records, Karen, that's what you gotta do, and, and that includes district court. You can't just go in the county clerk's office and say, well, I looked at the deed records, so this is what we own. Doesn't work that way.
I guess the question that follows is the estimate on official record search. Are you saying that does not include researching the district court records?
It does, if.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, huh?
It should.
It should, I understand.
If it doesn't, somebody's doing something wrong.
Understand, I have no qualms with Butler Law Firm or with the Lake Firm. I consider them as friends and everything. To me, this is, as I mentioned a while ago, a cost-benefit thing. I don't mind sticking my toe in the water a little bit to see where it leads us, and if it leads us somewhere where we need to plunge in the pool, perhaps that's what we should do. I don't swim almost at all, so my reluctance to plunge into the pool without at least testing the water is a little bit my own thing, anyway.
You and I swim, that's the same amount, I think.
Barely enough to pass required swimming at any.
Are there any other questions or matters I can help with?
Any, any other questions from the court? I guess not at this point.
May I be excused at this time?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you all very much for your time and consideration.
We're not through with this, I don't think.
Obviously.
I'm not sure where it's going from here, but we have more work to do, I think. Any other comments from the court, or this morning, I guess we're allowing comments from the audience also. If you've got anything to say at this workshop, it's time to say it, because we're fixed to close and go to regular meeting, if we're through with this item.
I would just like to express that as far as the roads go, you know, there is almost 1747, and unfortunately with these bills that they just passed in this legislation, we need to bear in mind, we're not going to be getting any money. Why the state legislation would push off this ruling until 2017 is, to me, beyond reason. I've called Siri Year's office, I can't seem to find anybody, you know, the original document before it went to committee was dated September 2015, which would bear to be a little bit more reasonable, considering there still is some production going on. By 2017, it seems to me that a lot of it's gonna be sent down and up with. You know, the document actually reads, we get lease money, the land, most of the land is already leased up, we're not gonna get any lease money off of the roads, and that by 2017, your, you know, mineral and royalty payments for any production is gonna be probably a lot more, a lot less than it would be in 2015. So, bear in mind that, you know, we just really aren't gonna be getting a lot of money out of those roads.
If you do discover land, what you're saying is with the decline rate, it's going to be less, it's going to be even less.
Understand, I, I suspect the legislature did not want to have to deal with, and I, certainly the amount they were, are going to give up would not increase their deficit, but it wouldn't, well, it would decrease their income for the next biennium. If they put it off for two years, basically, the next legislature gets to take the hickey on the loss of revenue, so.
It's actually despicable, quite frankly.
Yeah, I mean.
When you, when you get the numbers, we've given them severance tax, $479 million for this county alone, in oil and gas severance tax, from our county, only ours, that doesn't include any other Eagle Ford shell counties, and, and they can't find it within their heart to give us any of that money back to, to help repair our, our roads that, that production is filling their coffers.
In, in partial answer to your question, I talked with Darrell Fowler and a couple of the gentlemen who've been at the legislation, and they said we had to give up something to get this passed. We had some strong opposition, and to get it passed, we had to go to 2017, and we had to let the state continue to lease the land, the counties get the mineral rights. They said they had to make some sales.
It's not, it's not a mystery, they want the money.
Well, that's, yeah, we're, we're dealing with the typical trade-off, the, the rural people have to co-hat in hand in order to get the city legislators, which make up the vast majority of the legislature, to sign off on it. They'd rather build a portion of the freeway in San Antonio, Dallas, or whatever city you want to mention.
The seven largest cities in the state can control any legislation they choose to.
Right.
They can't force legislation on all of the smaller counties or, or towns or whatever, but they could keep the smaller ones from being able to pass anything, and they do regularly, and if you think they don't, you're just not paying attention. And our very best legislative representatives cannot control Houston and Dallas and Fort Worth and El Paso, Waco, and whatever else in the large city area, just can't do it, and never will be able to, and never have been able to, in the past. Comments otherwise from anybody? Everybody has given us all of your knowledge this morning, I assume, so we won't have any problems of going forward with the rest of our meeting. Unless anybody has anything else, I will close this meeting, and we will convene into a special call meeting for action purposes, which is item seven on our agenda this morning. One last time, is there anything to be said by anybody about, in the workshop? All right, the workshop's closed. I will convene at this time a special call meeting to consider the rest of the items that are on the call meeting agenda, and they will be items eight through 12, no, eight through 13, I'm sorry, 14 is the adjournment. With that said, we'll convene into a special call meeting, consider item eight, discuss, approve, disapprove, to consider, and possible set of active hiring Langley, Benak, and Butler to conduct a mineral interest title opinion on all property owned by Clark County, presented by Clint and Butler. With that said, and we'll, we'll proceed with that item. I, I have some, some reservations about plunging off into this without knowing exactly what we expect and how much it's likely to cost. I've heard the comments and what, what we're estimating it will cost, but I'm, I'm not sure that we're looking at it accurately at this time. With, with that said, I would ask for comments from the courts concerning the possible hiring of Langley, Benak, and Butler, or any other firm. I don't think we're limited to them, if we choose not to be, to conduct mineral interest title opinion on all property owned by Clark County. And that's not gonna be simple to find out, I don't think, I don't think anybody has a listing of all of the minerals owned by Clark County. There may be some, the people that are in the oil and gas leasing business may have some idea, but I would really be doubtful whether y'all have a, a, a good schedule of property that's owned by the county, and then there are problems with the cities and other, other things, but anyway, at any rate, if anybody wants to act on item eight of the agenda, we will.
I'll pitch something out there. I would, I would move that the court approve the official records search to get the process underway, and that we revisit it once that is completed and determine whether we go forward from that point.
Are you going to ask to appoint somebody to do the official search?
Well, the, the firms that have been represented, I guess, is who we should appoint, would be Lake and, and Butler Law Firm.
They, they haven't made any proposal as to cost or anything, have they?
We have an estimate on official record search of $22,500, sir. Here.
But I, I know that we need to know what minerals we do own, and realize that is , and I think that would be a place to start, so I'll second that motion. $22,500.
Did y'all say that that was possible to split up, the $22,000?
Pardon?
The motion that's on the table?
What the, the additional $22,000 to do would, we had not finished running out everything that the county could on, we have another.
So, the 600 documents would be, I think, set.
What have been your costs so far for the work for two, for this point? Now, if it's, I guess, official record search, what is the expense?
Roughly $60,000.
Sixty?
Yes, yes, sir, roughly $60,000.
That's somewhat more than $22,500.
Somewhat more. So, these $22,000 that you have here are in addition?
Yes.
Is that what it states, sir?
And, and included in that $60,000 is, we do have some completed run sheets that we did complete and turn over to when we have the mark for title fee. So, it's not all just record search, just determining which tracks the county owns. We ran full title on a few of these tracks, and have turned those over to my league.
Y'all, y'all charged them for doing that, or you're going to?
We have.
Or you're not, am I misunderstanding?
We have, we have deals for those parts, we have not been paid for.
Okay. I mean, but this is, this is to be a fee arrangement with y'all, whatever work you do that you're gonna charge for?
There are 600 documents that we need to go through to determine if the county's willing to do.
To determine what, Gary?
If the, if the county owns an interest in it, or what interest they do.
There's 600 additional tracks that we have titled going into the script.
600 documents, but we've done, we've done a good fine share of the research at the courthouse here, as far as the indexes go, and we've got 600 documents that we have to review to see of the, of the, you know, 555 roadway tracks, 142 feet tracks, there's 600 more documents we have not looked at that possibly might uncover some of the drives that county owns interest in.
So, I guess what the bottom question is, bottom dollar wise, y'all have spent approximately $60,000 already, so we're talking about $82,500 for the total search.
Well, David.
What will we receive for $60,000 if we do nothing?
We'll give you.
What work's been done today?
Everything that we have.
Who, who else will give us to pay the $60,000 or whatever?
That's what, that's what Maurice was talking about earlier.
I think, I think we've gotten our cart before our horse just a little bit.
Yeah. David, when you made the motion right now, you were making the motion just at $22,000 for the full research, not that addition of $60,000?
Yeah, see, that, that's just come up as far as I'm.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that was already made a second, and so we need to come, pull back on that one and decide what we're gonna do. My, my opinion, court, it's like, see, y'all can come out with exactly what y'all have spent already, if it's 58, if it's 50, if it's 60, 61, 62, come back with that, come back with additional fee that it's gonna cost to do the rest of the research, and then we can actually vote on a, on a model here that we know what it's gonna be, because we don't wanna jip y'all or jip us. You know, in no way make sure exactly what it is, because I know you're saying it's around about $60,000, but I don't know if the citizens are gonna be happy with us just making a motion around about price.
Can I add some clarity to this, Dave?
Sure.
I said that I should've jumped on right away when I heard, but as far as the record search we've done so far, we've done, as far as record search, we've done about 50 days it's probably gonna take, if we get the record search done, we've done about 45 of those days already, so we've already built the county for 45 of those days, so this $22,000 is for all 50 days. There are other, just title opinions as far as run sheet title opinion work that's been done, and that's inclusive in the total, that $60,000 you're talking about, that's including those run sheets, and the 45 days that we've done work on so far on the county search. We've got five days, I apologize, I should've jumped on real quick, but I didn't wanna throw something out there unless, you know, I thought it was figured out. I can see we're, there's been some confusion, I certainly apologize, but.
Oh, no, that's okay, I'm gonna start that.
I think what's happened here, and clearly what's happened here, is our firm, based on the gate disclaimer that we have signed by the county attorney, in good faith, went ahead and started this project. faith, went ahead and started this project. We thought that we'd been employed to do so. And I, I didn't, I wouldn't even work on it, Clinton did. And he employed the search to Carol Lake, just like he said he was gonna do, and they started working on the project. And anticipated it was gonna go forward until we received further work from the county. Uh, whatever the source of that miscommunication, misunderstanding is, that was our understanding that we'd been employed by the county to do it. And it started off on the project. We're now, uh, I'm not hearing that they've already got sixty thousand dollars in it. Uh, they've accomplished some things, have done some things, you know, in their start offers that just revealed. Uh, I think the county now needs to evaluate whether indeed they do wanna go forward with this project, and whether the branch of court wants to sign off. Uh, I do hope that the county would, uh, to this parliament in good faith believe that we were employed, would go ahead and take care of these bills, that doesn't need to be discussed right now, 'cause we don't have the exact bill to present, but we'll do that, and then the county, the county will then consider whether to go forward with the project or not. But I do think that in view of the, uh, the son gave the letter that the county would seek at least to go ahead and pay for the expenses incurred up to this point in time, because there were, in belief that the county approved the project.
Pardon? I don't know if we're the, it jumped off the track, but when I originally talked to the Butler firm, I did it, and signed an engagement letter that indicated that there was, the law firm would charge us so much per hour, to give us an idea as to the cost involved in this project. There was a letter that was prepared, uh, by the law firm and sent to the judge's office for his signature, and that letter was never, uh, signed. It did not have the commissioner's number or something. So I don't know exactly what happened here, but when I originally started out, my understanding was the law firm was gonna give us a price as to the cost. And the second letter was never signed. And I think there was a meeting with Judge Long, and, uh, there were some questions, and I think that's a reason we got court accept. But I did not, uh, understand as much as I should about this, and there may be, it may be my fault, but I was of the impression that the second letter had already been signed by the judge or had been approved by, uh, the judge, and that's basically where we worked at.
I had wondered whether, uh, the engagement letter that we have in our packet obligated the court to pay for the services as stated in there.
There is, there is another letter that the judge has, or I don't know where it's at, that has replaced part of the commissioners and for the county judge, and I signed off on the letter at the bottom, approving it as before, but it required the commissioner's court and the county judge to sign off on it. And I don't know if that, that letter, I don't know if it's in the packet or not.
Well, I'm not wanting to stiff the Lake firm or the Butler firm for their work, don't misunderstand me.
I think it was just a misunderstanding on, on my part and what was doing. In the past, I've signed engagement letters that just applied to the attorney, and that's basically all of the authority that I have at the time as I understood it. Uh, and I've done that in the past on some other attorneys, maybe the commissioner's court, gets to address that in the future, you know, I don't have any problem with that. I did it, I would totally, just a little bit more.
All right, I'm assuming we haven't heard Manica Langley's charges included in this process yet?
No, sir. But our charges at this point are much, much, much less than Kelly and Lace, because our process, our part of the process is yet to really take off.
Yeah, I think we did, I signed the, improved the bill, I sent to LaVanna, I don't know if she'd gotten it, uh, maybe twelve hundred dollars, I'm not sure.
We've paid Langley, Benak twenty-three hundred and one dollars to date.
Okay. Does that court slide with y'all's record?
That's sounding about right. Uh, there might be some, uh, billing outstanding at this point, but I'd be happy to go separate with the commissioner's court. Yeah, I think what our proposal, Judge Long, will be that, let's get the exact bill from Carol Lake's office, come in here, if further explanation needed, we'll discuss that. And at that time, the court can decide what further steps they wanna take, and we'll, we'll get the work, spend them at Carol Lake, get copies to you. You can look it over, you gotta see what they're doing, and see if it looks like it's moving the ball forward to what he wants to do.
But if y'all will take a look at whatever you've got, and, and I will communicate with you about it, and, uh, get back to the court, and we will get it solved in some way.
I'll do.
That's satisfactory to y'all and us, but.
Yes, Your Honor, I will, uh, I'll get you copies of, uh, of the work, or I'll get you the work that's been done, I'll go ahead and talk to him and present my firm.
All right.
Mr. Brockman, uh, you said it would take about five more days to complete the record research, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir, the sixty thousand dollars, uh, Mr. Reynolds, that we've built so far, nineteen thousand of that is towards the record search. So we've got five to six days left of that, so roughly about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars worth of work to do on the record search, is what we've got left to do.
Would, would the commissioners think that it might be worthwhile for that relatively nominal additional expense to allow them to continue at least to that far, so we would have a, at least a portion of it done? I mean, I'll withdraw the previous motion, because obviously it's not germane to where we're at, but, uh, if, if they're, if they're within four or five thousand dollars of finishing the official record search part of it, that would at least take us to a stopping point. What I'm hearing, they've already spent, are, will have some money spent on the run sheet research portion of it, is that correct? So that would give us all of the official record search, and it would give us whatever they've done on the run sheet research to look at whenever they come back with a bill. Does that make sense a little bit, doesn't it? Okay.
Doesn't mean.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to complete one portion of their, of their proposal, if you wanna call it that. If we, if we stop right now and they bill where we're at right now, our official record search is still incomplete. Now, you, you're, you're the attorney, I'm not, I'm, I'm.
I don't represent this court.
But I'm looking, I'm looking at the, at the, at the points on here, the words, so much for this, so much for that, and what my intentions were was to get us to this point right here.
Twenty-two-five.
Yeah, the twenty-two-five. Well, we've already spent.
Nineteen.
Nineteen-something to get us to that point, so what I'm saying is, would it be worthwhile to go ahead and at least get this part of it completed, let them complete that part of it? And of course, we're gonna have some, we're probably going to be obligated to pay this portion on the run sheet. They have not completed it, but at least have started it, so I, I don't know how you do that, I mean.
How long would it take y'all to get to us, everything y'all already done for the X amount of dollars y'all said that y'all may have built in?
Might be at our office. Yeah, everything's been done to this point?
Mm-hmm.
It's cost free.
Oh, okay. Up to the sixty?
Yes, sir. There might be some, they might have some run sheet still throughout, I don't know if they've built that, so.
About forty-one thousand, definitely.
Yes, I mean, it could be given to the court accept.
I'm getting a little confused, I don't know whether we owe twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars or sixty-eight, sixty-eight thousand dollars.
At this point, it's close to sixty, it's sixty.
I would like, you know, just to kinda keep it simple, 'cause I'm a free guy. Get down to a number that everybody understands, 'cause you keep, I mean, I don't know about the court, but I'm getting confused.
Well, I don't think we understand the same thing necessarily, I think we need to before we move forward. So the sixty thousand dollars, Carol Lake's firm's got nineteen thousand invested right now?
No. The sixty thousand dollars, nineteen-five was, it's been spent on record search.
Okay.
The rest of that sixty thousand was spent preparing run sheet.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. But the record search is nineteen thousand dollars been spent.
And so there are about thirty-five hundred or so, three, four thousand dollars away from being finished with record search. They have not prepared all the run sheets. So I think what branch of Reynolds was suggesting, and why we had them go ahead and finish that is fairly nominal amount, and then we'll at least have a complete record search done. And there'll be some run sheet we'll also get paid, and then we'll decide what those run sheets, see what does this, what does this do for us? Is it helpful, is it worth the expense? Anyway, make the determination as to finish that out.
My intention a little while ago was to get the numbers in front of the court, so we know exactly what we're looking at, 'cause the judge doesn't understand either, there was a couple of citizens that doesn't either. I kind of understand the numbers, but I would like to see them here, we don't have a problem with what you're doing, you're fantastic, but seeing the numbers here and seeing what we're being charged for would be great, in my opinion, before we make any further movement. But it's up to.
We'll set up an action meeting, if that's all right with y'all. And you've got a chance to look at the numbers and prepare something for us, so that we'll have them to look at and see, I know, anticipate that we're gonna have any real problems resolving this between the court and, and y'all, your firm.
We'll do it.
And I'm not talking from that people at all. I just wanna be sure of what we're doing and that y'all are satisfied and that we're satisfied also.
We'll do it.
Simplicity.
Well, that'd be if the next regular meeting.
Uh, the next one we schedule will be, uh, the next regular meeting would, what is today?
Next one is Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We've missed the window on, on Tuesday, haven't we?
Is it, have it posted yet?
No, no, we posted today.
Hadn't posted today?
We can post it today and be okay, yeah.
Next Tuesday, okay?
That's fine, and if it's too late to get it posted today, we can wait.
We'll post it this afternoon, and I'll say it's okay for Tuesday.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
We need, we need to talk with y'all, or y'all prepare, what do you feel like the notice of the meeting should say?
Okay.
So make sure that we're all, we're, I, I don't see.
I'll work with Clinton on that.
I don't see any problem or anything at all, just so we're in agreement on that.
Okay, we'll get it over there.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
You bet.
With item nine on the agenda, item nine on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove on salary for human resource position and possibly hiring to this Corinth County position authored by Shelby Davis.
Uh, recently, we interviewed for a, uh, human resource person, I had her on the agenda last week, but Judge, you were part of the interview process, along with, uh, Mr. Hancock. And, uh, originally I put this on here, whether you decide what we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna hire somebody, or we're just gonna deal with the position altogether. Uh, it is my, my intention that we actually create a human resource department, just to, to, uh, make sure that our employees and everybody in the county is being treated fairly and we're protected, but, uh, make sure everything has been, you know, done that legally and, and to include redoing probably our policy manual, updating it more as, as we should be doing. Uh, we had three or four interviews, I can't even remember, and with Mr. Hancock here, and, and you, Judge, uh, I had talked with Vi, and Vi had wanted to take, use one of her people in the, in the office, uh, to do the, uh, this HR and payroll, but I think the HR person, quite frankly, needs to be kind of away from that, and she can maybe continue to do the payroll, but just have a standing HR department to deal with the workers' comp, the, uh, uh, insurance, and, and actually make sure that we have all the, maintain all the records and stuff for the, for the, uh, for the county that involve our employees. So with that, I just hope and floor up the discussion. I know we talked, last meeting we had, had discussed about making it a salary that's attractive to where we don't have to sit there and bump it up to get it where we need to, you know, to attract a, a person. That's really capable, and make sure we have the right person with the right quality.
Is this position, the HR position, was it like a clerk, or is it gonna be a managing position?
Managing position.
Is that the way we stated it?
And, uh, it was gonna be to report strictly to the, to the commissioner's court. At first, it'll be reported to the judge in the commissioner's court.
So if it's gonna be, if we're gonna hire someone, and we put it out there, hire someone, the supervisor's gonna be commissioner's court?
The judge and commissioner's court, yes.
Would, would you state the full duties that are assigned to this HR person?
Do we have a job description, basically?
You said payroll, workers' comp, and what?
Not, not payroll, but workers' comp, making sure all our, uh, the HR department's policy manual is up to date, make sure the employees are aware of what's going on and doing, make sure we comply with all federal guidelines. It goes on and on, I don't have a complete HR manual in front of me, but there's a lot of, lot of stuff that goes with it.
Do we do, do we have a, uh, job description? I'm sorry.
Yes, there is a job description for, for an HR resource person. My comment would be, if that position is only handling employee benefits, policy manual, workers' comp, that's not a full-time position. I think that position should also prepare payroll.
Well, I think, I think, I think that can be phased in later on. I think starting, initially to start the office, we need just to get everything in line first with the payroll, I mean, with the HR, uh, uh, policy manual and stuff like that, and then, then bring the payroll into it, uh, because it's gonna take a time for anybody new with, with this time clock plus to get, to get the feel for the payroll, plus I think there's an issue about, you know, can that be done?
Most organizations, their HR, their human resource department is a department unto itself, it deals only with personnel issues, and doesn't have anything to do with payroll, which is financial function. And if the job description is written as a management resource for human resources, it'd be more than a full-time job.
And we're gonna place payroll on them, just saying we would, we'd have to tell them that with an initial start off, because if we just throw something on them, they're gonna be asking for more pay, they're saying that's not what they started for. So you're saying that it's not, you can't do it, Vi?
Payroll alone can take up all week, or payroll, and then the following, just following up, making sure everything is updated. Two positions need to be separated, and that was one of the reasons why I suggested Elaine, who does payroll now, to be the HR person also, 'cause she's already kind of doing some of the stuff that I normally do, and I've been handing over to her, the insurance, uh, the retirement, or somebody quit, someone's withdrawal of their retirement, the policy manual, things like that. The two need to be stayed separate. And I think there's an attorney general's opinion on where payroll should actually be, it can actually be with a different position or with a selected official on that, so the two need to stay separate. Payroll takes a lot of your time.
Did you say you have an attorney general's opinion?
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna do.
Have you given it to the whole court?
I gave it to you, sorry, I gave it to the whole court.
Okay.
Judge Long, if I might?
Sure.
I believe the attorney general's opinion that the treasurer refers to relates to the fact that the actual payment, as in the issuance of checks, has to go through the treasurer. That, that is, uh, that's the.
That's a function of the treasurer.
Yeah, it's a function of the treasurer. Now, the preparation of payroll is, is not necessarily a treasurer's office position. Other counties do that in different ways, some do it. Some do it through the treasurer's office, others do it differently. The treasurer is actually correct, she needs to actually issue, take the steps that would get people paid by direct deposit, by check. Okay? I know it's another item on your agenda, and I don't mean to jump to it. This is actually an issue that's come up in the Hancock versus Malone case. And one of the questions, in the most recent hearing we had with Judge Peoples, was Judge Peoples' concern, as he expressed it, was whether the treasurer's office could get its statutory functions accomplished. And he is now set up for trial, in order for a jury in this county to determine whether or not the county treasurer can get that job done. One of the issues Judge Peoples raised is that it might be that the treasurer will argue that I can't get my other statutory duties done, because I've also got work to take care of the HR. And we can discuss that in greater detail when you get to that agenda item where you've got an executive session, but that's the background I think the court needs to have as it evaluates this agenda item.
Thank you.
Your Honor, this is Michael Shaughnessy, he represents the-
I will wear whatever he is, and what he does.
Oh, I apologize. My name is Mike Shaughnessy. I represent Mr. Hancock in the Hancock versus Malone lawsuit.
Yes.
Shelby, do you have someone, or do you and Judge Long have someone that you wish to recommend for the position?
I've got one I'd like to recommend, but we're, I don't, I hadn't really talked with this person, but the salary range, I'm gonna throw the salary out there first. I was thinking the salary range should be between 45 to 55. That was mine. It'd give us some room to grow later on. If it'd be two plus, it could probably, it'd be a good salary, I think, to start to attract somebody. Initial budget for the HR person, I believe, was 31 something, 31 eight, which would be just doing the payroll and, I guess, the other HR duties. But just to be a fully standalone, and also to provide train to the employees.
When we made this position, we put $31,280, what was that?
It's somewhere around there.
Was that somewhere around there? Everybody we interviewed- And that was gonna be a standalone position there, or it was gonna be under my?
No, that was set up under the county financial officer as the assistant to the financial officer, but that assistant would be in charge of HR. That's how it's budgeted currently.
So basically, we put it as an assistant position?
In the current budget, yes.
Yes, that's why we're gonna put it on.
James, everybody we interviewed, you know, they were, everybody was the pay scale ranges within that, within the range of pension, but they were, except for one was in the seventies.
What they're asking for.
Would, not would, does the job descriptions require, have an educational requirement, an experience requirement, or anything of that nature?
Yes.
Does?
I don't have it in front of me to be able to tell you exactly what it is, but yes.
I believe it has a, it's a degree position-
Okay.
With some experience in HR.
Okay. Well, I'm with Shelby. I think that we need to, I'm always wanting to do everything as cheaply as possible. Maybe this is one of two or three positions that we need to look at, paying the person what it's worth, and hope of getting someone who is of quality, rather than just getting someone.
The budget's set for $31,000, so. So my suggestion would be, we're only four months into, before we start the new fiscal year, to make this another budgeted item for the 2016 year, and discuss it in more, exactly what the HR duties are doing here. Because some of you are ones that out payroll, and some of you are saying, you know, not payroll. I think it needs to be a little bit, discussed a little bit more in sort of a hurried deposition. Who's gonna be your supervisor, what exactly? Because right now, my office as the HR, I'm the one that's having to tell them, well, this is what we've been doing, this is some of the things we have to do every month, you know, retirement support, insurance, things like that, and that's gonna tie me up some more. I mean, that's just my opinion. I think we can wait a couple more months, before already, eight months into the fiscal year.
Well, as far as, too, as all HR duties, they are not all currently in the treasurer's office. The auditor's office handles workers' comp now.
And that would be one thing that gets taken out of their office.
What, this is, hasn't, let me try this one more time. The HR person would report to the judge, is that correct?
Judge in the court.
Judge in the court.
That's what's proposed, yes.
So do they be fucking in and out every day, or do they show up when they want to? Or just stay with you this hour?
And if we set-
Where are you gonna put them?
If we set 31,280 for an assistant, now we're gonna go to manager, so a standalone position. Shouldn't we do some research to see what exactly they earn in the counties, what size the counties are? Have you did that, Shelby? Is that 41,50?
45,50 is in the range, somewhere in the seventies.
Somewhere, and I didn't bring it in with me, but we've got that survey that was done two years ago, I believe, and I think probably HR is one of the positions on there. I unfortunately did not look before I came in-
It wasn't on the record, yeah.
-to see what it was, but I'm pretty sure it was above 30 something thousand.
Yes.
I wasn't here at that time as part of the court. Did you have a copy of that?
I don't have it with me. You have a copy of the entire book.
I have it in my office.
If you'll talk a minute, I'll go get it.
And as far as the discussion about payroll, whether it needs to be prepared and generated by the treasurer's office, I know a statutory duty of the treasurer is to receive and disperse funds of the county, which synonymous to payroll is accounts payable, paying the bills. We do all the preparation of that. We code, enter in the system, run the reports, print the checks, then the checks go to the treasurer for dispersment. So that would be similar to if an HR, excuse me, HR person prepared payroll, ran everything, sent it to the treasurer for review, sent it to me for review, and then we authorize the issuance of the checks or direct deposits.
So it's gonna go through three, two more departments before it gets approved?
No, it won't go through two more, because it's already going to right now.
Does the HR have to be in the news?
I do know that Mr. Shaughnessy said it does not have to be done in the department of treasurer. I talked to the treasurer of Goldhead County, she said we have a county attorney do it. I signed the checks.
He wanted to say something.
One of the issues that concerns me is, and let me explain. I've represented counties for more than 20 years. And with regard to who an HR department reports to, in the counties that I represent, that have a separate HR department, they all report to the commissioner's court. That person is hired, reviewed, and all of their job performance, decisions regarding hiring, firing, raises, all of that are handled at the commissioner's court level. So they're direct report to the commissioner's court. There's a timing issue that concerns me, and it relates to the lawsuit. It doesn't relate to the county's business. But I'm very concerned that we're gonna get into a November trial, and the issue is going to be raised that whether or not the treasurer can and is doing her job is based in part on the fact that she has non-statutory responsibilities, including certain HR functions. Judge Peoples has already issued three injunctions ordering the treasurer to comply with her statutory duties. To this point, we know that you're not getting accurate monthly reports, which are one of her statutory duties. We know that the audits have required the auditing firms to do calculations to establish what your real fund balance is on. If this board is inclined to develop, to start an HR department, I would encourage you, at whatever point in time you feel you've got the information, to go ahead and act on that. I would discourage you from waiting for another fiscal, at the beginning of another fiscal year, to do that, because my concern is that the argument will be made in November. I've got non-statutory duties, that's why I can't get other work done. And I just, I don't want us to continue to have a what came first, a chicken or the egg argument, with regard to the treasurer's office doing its duties.
Elaine does payroll from point A to point C. I sign the checks. I don't, she, that's what her daughter's payroll. I don't do that. That is what her daughter.
James, on the-
And that's why I asked for a second person in my office also to help me with other duties that she, Elaine, has to do.
So you're no longer reviewing payroll at all? You just sign checks? When Elaine does it, she probably comes in.
Sixty-nine, seventy-one, two oh one, three oh one, four oh one, five oh one.
The issue in fact of the matter is, you haven't gotten accurate monthly reports.
Because our system's not allowing that. And I think that's been happening continuously, and all people agree to that. We have nothing for the issues with the system.
Back to my phone.
So we are not talking HR, we're off the agenda item.
Well, and we are not, and commissioner, I'll stop performing too. Here's the issue, okay? Treasurer's office has statutory duties it needs to perform. When confronted with the fact that the treasurer's not performing those duties, a series of justifications comes out. I have a software problem. I have non-statutory duties. Other things come up. My only, the only point I'm trying to make to this board is, if you remove that HR function from the treasurer's office, as other counties have done, then the treasurer is going to have another person who can actively work to get her statutory duties performed in a timely manner, which is not currently happening.
I don't have a problem with the HR part, payroll, that's it. I don't have a problem at all with HR being in all my debt. It's the payroll part.
Shelby, James, on the, based on the salary survey- Salary survey that we conducted last year, they have the HR, the human resource person, it's from 69 to 71.
There should be three, low, medium, and high, which is the low?
The low is 69.
Shelby, can I say something on-
And then there was-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, in regards to talking about, you're varying from 3,400 to 32,000 all the way up to 70,000. I'd just like to make a comment, having three kids in college, or having graduated from college, there is a huge difference between someone with paying and going through four years' work at college and paying for four years' work at college and having a degree versus someone that doesn't, sitting in that type of position. That's where your variance in your salary comes from. See, there's a huge problem in someone being paid $73,000 a year in Rose and Bridge, and there's no, there's no formal education in it. You know, college education's worth something. The value of it's worth something, the time of it's worth something. You know, a school teacher goes to school, you know, goes to college for four years, and unfortunately, her base pays about $32,000, which is sad. But, you know, you can justify paying 31 or 32,000 if someone doesn't have the degree and might be qualified for the position per se. There's just a big difference there and that.
James, I'm sure, it's 59 is the minimum. 55 was the minimum, 65 was mid-point, 71 was max.
Okay, that's okay. And this position, meaning that it's a standalone position, it requires like bachelors, masters? What does it require?
Requires a bachelor's degree.
A bachelor?
A bachelor's degree.
And you said some, some years' experience in HR? How many?
And three years, I think. We've interviewed a bunch of, about four or five applicants, and the salary ranged from around 45 to 81, 81 or 82, is what they were asking for. One of them didn't have a degree.
One of the guys, one of the, one of the people that came by, were they from Freeo County?
Freeo.
And he was, and he was 11, 81, because he had set up several HR departments, and that was his specialty. He had retired from some grocery company.
Safeway.
I think he may have been Safeway. He retired from Safeway, and had set up the Freeo County HR, and had done one or two others.
Freeo County is the only county that he has worked for, though. Everything else had been in the private sector.
Okay.
If I may, I just, and this is just a personal thing, but I just wanna say it. I personally do not have a college degree, but that doesn't mean I'm not qualified for specific positions. So I always say it should be more work experience equal to that college degree, because a person could have worked in HR for 10 years, or six years, and know more than that person coming out of college. I just wanted to put that out there.
These are the job specs, that's, that's what I would-
Yeah, no, I know. I just wanted to remind you.
But I still think that for the court, if we decide to go with this, I think the starting salary or the salary range, for the court to think about it, between 45 and 55 to attain the person, and it's also below the, I know it's below the recommended thing on the salary survey, but in my opinion, this is new waters, and we're getting into, and I'd rather start this way than have room to grow later on.
So you wanna start our own three sections, low, medium, and high, not go with the salary survey, start?
I'm just saying, I think the proper, to me, my opinion is that it should be arranged between 45 and 55. If you say 55, 55 would be a little, be $4,000 below the salary survey, which we could, you know, use that as the entry level and go from there. We could start, we could start the entry salary at $45,000 if we choose to, and put 50 as the midpoint, and 55 as the max. But if you wanna go on the salary survey, we could enter it starting at 55,000 instead of 59,000, which is, we just recommended with the salary survey. I'm just thinking we need to come in a little lower than, so have more room to grow later on. So y'all may, maybe y'all agree with the salary survey, just my opinion.
I understand. The salary survey, what is it, it's a 59, 60 what?
65.
65, 71?
Correct.
You could, and that's a $12,000 difference. If you wanna go with the 45, you can go up to 57, and then pick one in the middle of the mid, something like that. I don't know.
But it's, you know, and then again, whichever person we select, it's gonna have to talk with them about it, you know.
What was the lowest requested salary among all of those folks, do you recall?
I think it was 45.
I think that's what you said, a little while ago, 45. You come in.
Shelby says this is an agenda item that you placed on the agenda. Did you wanna settle it today with some numbers, or?
Well, I wanted to throw it out there, and I would like to set the number down, so we can at least get, we can have that number set maybe before the budget, budget time comes out, or maybe start the person within a month or so.
So are you gonna reopen the position for advertisement, or are you just gonna consider those?
Consider the applicants that we had.
So then, are you looking at an immediate start date, or are you looking at October 1?
We're not obligated to hire anybody because they're an applicant for the offer.
Right.
So that doesn't mean there's gonna be a pushing field job.
That's why I asked if we're gonna reopen the advertisement.
I'd just send go with the people that we applied, that applied, because I think it's, we had three good applicants.
We had the, I'm sorry, we had the applicants on this amount, right? And this is gonna be a different amount now? So it should be re-advertised for the long- So it should be re-advertised for the low, medium, and high now, or?
When we advertise, I don't think we-
You didn't.
Oh, it wasn't advertised.
When, when he, when, what you're going to say is you didn't set a salary.
Set a salary, we did put the salary line in the deal.
No, I'm sorry, ma'am.
They did not set a salary when they advertised, but I believe the question was asked.
I see.
What I would like to suggest, and I'm nobody, I understand that, but I would suggest that you make a motion today, if you're prepared to do that, if you decide that this is what you want to do. But you don't have to set a lifetime salary range or anything, just whoever was on that committee, if those are the people you trust to make that decision, authorize them to make the decision, and an offer between a specific number that you guys decide today, not two, or however you want to put that, and leave it to their discretion, but, but give them a limit on what they can offer. That would be, in my opinion, the most professional and best way to do it. And that way, the committee has authorization to hire his, those people you trust. If you want to set a new committee or something like that, that's usually how these things are handled.
Who's the committee?
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I don't know, that's, that's my question.
Well, they're the ones doing the hiring, but not correct. There's no committee to hire.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is set a committee that, that someone who permissioned to do that.
Why can't they, why didn't they say?
Well, if they weren't all in the, in the interview.
May I just interject?
Sure, I mean, I'm just curious.
The three folks that interviewed the applicants was Shelby, the judge, and myself.
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
And that's, that's what the commission, the judge wanted us to do. The judge is authorized to hire the individual independently, if he chooses to do something more.
But he chose to spread it out.
I move that we move forward with hiring someone, and I'm willing to take the recommended applicant that the judge and Shelby and Mr. Hancock came up with at a salary of sixty thousand a year. We would have to amend the budget, I guess, or find some money for the next few months. If this person comes on now, they have an opportunity to get up to speed by the next budget year. If we put them on the first day of the next budget year, they're three or four months finding their way around and where the bathroom is and everything else, and I think it's, it's been kicked down the road enough, I think probably it needs to be acted on.
Is the sixty thousand, because we're, we're going like in three ranges, that would be that the low, medium-
That's the, that's the low range, within a few hundred dollars.
This person's the low range?
Yeah.
But the salary survey has it at fifty-nine for the low.
Okay.
You could say up to sixty thousand, because if they're willing to take it for us.
I round it off. Pardon me, it's fifty-nine and change, isn't it?
I, I kind of think the initial range ought to be from forty-five to fifty-five. That's my perspective. So I'm going to make, you have a motion or no?
I do, but it's not been seconded, so you go ahead and do what you want to. I mean, I'm, I'm not being mean, but you do have to. The low range is fifty-nine, and, and the salary survey, and this is only a guideline, remind, remember, it's not etched in stone on the courthouse cornerstone, but the low salary recommended by this survey was fifty-nine for sixty-seven, twenty. That's a lot of figures, so I rounded to sixty. Now, if Shelby feels that that's out of range, you know, go ahead, I have no problem.
So that wasn't a second on David's?
Wasn't a second on that.
So it died from lack on the second.
I'm with it, if the motion is dead, then I'm going to be allowed the judge to negotiate forty-five to fifty-five with the, with the applicant for the position of HR.
I'll second it.
Forty-five minimum and fifty-five maximum, is that what you're?
That's correct.
Okay, then a motion and a second to authorize the judge to hire, it was to authorize to be hired.
Yes, sir.
Forty-five thousand to fifty-five thousand, forty-five minimum to fifty-five maximum.
Maximum.
All right. Further discussion?
Yes. Is this just for insurance and policy? Is this going to include payroll?
Not payroll at this time, no.
No?
I think it should.
What we're going to, I think we need to get our, we need to get the HR office established first, and then move the payroll to it later, as, as, when, once it gets going. Because I think if we just dump, dump it on a new person on off the bat, it's going to be chaos unless you move the person looking for the treasury into that office, let her work the payroll out of that office, and be assigned to the court and HR. That'd be on the way, otherwise we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
But shouldn't that be, shouldn't that person be told that they are going to take over that?
Eventually, eventually.
Ninety-eight or sixty-eight.
Yeah, I agree with that, eventually.
Why don't you-
And the motion to say that it includes instructing them to payroll and be part of their duties.
Beginning the next fiscal year. That gives them four months to get up to speed.
Four months to get on track.
Mr., Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Is there, do you have a thought on any of this?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with the suggestion that you bring somebody on with the idea that you will give them initial set of requirements that they need to work on, review your personnel policies and other things, and then after they've got that under the belt, you move the payroll responsibilities out of them.
Okay, thank you.
Just for information, here's the job description that came from that, from the-
Who's the?
The salary survey. I was trying to grab myself, when y'all did that salary survey, that, that was the, the recommendation of their, or, or what they looked at, I guess. This is, I feel like it includes payroll on there.
That's the same one that-
Same, I would have been if you did payroll as well.
Yes, it's-
The same one that we have enough-
Beginning next fiscal-
Beginning next fiscal year.
Can I make a suggestion on that? Possibly, next fiscal year, make that a two-person office, and let that person that's in new HR now be your HR person, and the person who's now doing payroll just slide into the HR person's position, because there's no way that HR person can be doing both positions. If you got a girl that's doing it now, just slide into under HR and continues to do the payroll, and you're training somebody and-
I think we have a choice of time, we have a court.
I see what you mean.
Yes, I mean.
You need to float it. Don't miss some court. If not, all in favor of the motion, uh, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same side. Motion carried you down, that's what. Out of ten on the agenda, discuss approved, disapproved, bank depository bid, negotiate extended current contract that expires August first, two thousand and fifteen, two go out for new bids, ordered by, by you have.
I hear, I moved on, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Uh, the current depository bid with Fall City National Bank expires August first of this year, and so the state tax, which I have a copy here, says that you can negotiate for an extension of the two-year contract, because this contract that we have now is a new contract, or you can go out for bids. It's whatever the court wants to do. And basically, once y'all make that decision, I have nothing else to do with it, I just brought it to the attention of the court, because it does need to be taken care of. You can negotiate like the interest rates on it for another two years, if their, interest rates are currently higher than what we have now, like on CDs, but-
Last year, we advertised for bids and we didn't even receive the bids.
Correct.
Had to negotiate.
Correct.
So we just, we just, we're going to call it to negotiate.
You want me to do that?
If whoever has to.
I think Commissioner's Court needs to do that.
Goodness, Ms. Court, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
If it's decided to negotiate or go out for bids, we need to put a stipulation in there to have Karnes County National Bank as a sub-depository, should Fall City National get the bid again, so that we are able to do our feet collecting offices' deposits locally by the officials themselves, as has been directed by Judge Peoples.
I've got, I've got a real problem with anything that allows the Karnes County Bank to be involved in the depository business, and the reason is that I'm on the board at the Karnes County Bank, and I don't think they should be handling county funds with me being on the board of directors.
Well, we've already established that account.
No, we haven't. You established it, but nobody else has established it.
Mr. Shaughnessy and Yelinger, that's what I was directed to do, so I'm sorry, that, I'm-
Okay, fine.
Wait. Let me explain where we are. Judge Peoples, a few months ago, District Judge Peoples, who's hearing the Hancock-Malone case a few months ago, asked the LaSalle County auditor-
Freeo.
Freeo County.
No, Addisboro.
Addisboro.
Well, there's only two hundred and fifty-one other counties.
We'll get there in a minute.
I thought it was LaSalle, but, okay. Asked, uh, the LaSalle County-
Ask them.
Ask another-
Another-
Another elected official in another county to come in and meet with the auditor and treasurer to try, after a long hearing, Judge, Judge Peoples concluded, among other things, that part of the problem was, we needed better communication between the auditor and treasurer's office, and figure out better ways for them to work together. He asked an elected official in another county, um, to come in and meet with them. One of the suggestions that came out of that meeting was, the treasurer's office doesn't always have to actually physically get the money before it goes into a depository institution, okay? The idea was, as suggested by another county, was have your elected officials, your JPs, even your district and county clerk, if, if it works, have them deposit the money into an account that is controlled by the treasurer and auditor, okay? And then, after they deposit the money, say I'm a JP and I put in a hundred dollars, I still have to go to the treasurer's office and turn in my report that accounts for where the hundred dollars came from, okay? We had a hearing, we had a telephone hearing after that hearing, in which Judge Peoples basically said, as long as the treasurer is assured that she is not going to be in trouble for allowing this to happen, allowing other departments to deposit, she ought to be willing to do that, because it's in the best interest of the county. He didn't say, set up a depository account at the Karnes County National Bank. He said, set up an account which will facilitate this, okay? Now, Judge, I understand your issue, and you may have to recuse yourself. The only reason I'm standing up here is, Judge Peoples didn't direct anybody to set up an account at the Karnes County National Bank. He said, set up a depository account.
Well, I originally wanted a deposit at the Fall City National Bank, when we had a meeting with all the elected officials that bring money, and I was funding it at the Fall City National Bank, and Herb Hancock basically pitched a fit, and said, well, that defeats the purpose of, of the Fall City National Bank. Do we need to get Judge Peoples involved in this? And after the conversation we had with him, we didn't want to make him any madder than he was when we hung up the phone with him. So I agreed to the Karnes County National Bank.
And that's fine, I'm just saying, I didn't want the impression to be left that Judge Peoples or someone had said, put it at the Karnes County National Bank.
Well, he gave me a choice, Karnes County or Fall City National.
Yes. He, he said, put it in a county bank that people can conveniently deposit. That was Judge Peoples' intention. Judge Long, I understand your concern.
We have other county banks that are available, that doesn't have the problem that the bank I'm involved in does.
Okay, well, I was unaware that you were on that board, sir, I'm sorry. I thought you were on the Fall City National Bank, where I'm next.
Judge, you can, you can shoot the three of us that were here at the last meeting, because I think we approved that, and I'd hope that perhaps that you being able to recuse yourself from the vote on the thing would not create a problem, but if it does, you know, we don't want to create a problem for you.
Well, I feel like it creates one for me, and I may be wrong, maybe I can refuse myself, and I don't want to do that, I'll say that.
Well, I mean, if you would have voted for it actively, that would be it, but as long as it's a passive situation where you don't have any, pardon me, any control over it, I'm not a lawyer, you're the lawyer, but I wouldn't think that that would create a problem. But if we need to move it before you, Lynn, Shelby, and me and James up to shoot.
Well, let me, let me say this. Judge, you either need to recuse yourself, or it needs to go somewhere.
Or it needs to go somewhere else, I understand that.
That's the, that's the issue.
And I would prefer that it goes somewhere different, and that I not recuse myself.
Well, and then, then the challenge becomes this, and I'm not, I'm not taking you on, Judge.
True story.
I'm just telling you this. The challenge then becomes exactly what Herb pointed out, which is, you've got to pick a bank that's convenient for elected officials to make, and, and other departments to make deposits, okay? That's, that's the other point of it, you just got to find a bank that's going to meet that requirement. And I'm not familiar enough with banking in Karnes County to get in that discussion.
Any of the banks in Karnes County are within driving distance to use as a depository in my estimation, and, uh, I don't, I can't control that, I can't control the votes of the other members of this, this commissioner's court, but, uh-
Judge, the-
It sure going to make me unhappy if they do this.
The, the other point that was brought up, and I realize, uh, situation you're confronting, was that by depositing here, we were not going to wind up having to pay everyone mileage to go to Fall City and R. Kennedy or wherever. Now, you know, I'm, I'm not going to charge the county mileage, but I know some of the officials do, and I'm not complaining, it's their right to do so. But, uh, anyway, whatever the court wants to do is fine, we had no intention of creating a problem for you or a conflict of interest when we, when we move forward on it. I'll put it like that.
In Addisboro County, where they do this now, they have a deputy that is assigned to go to all the offices except for the one in-
Lidle.
Lidle. He's kind of far out by himself, and he does it in a separate bank.
In Lidle.
In Lidle, yes, but all, that's, so now the, the elected officials in Addisboro County make those deposits, it's done by a deputy picking them up and taking it to the bank and then going back the next day and taking their... So, I don't know. But I think in the statutes, you can name more than one depository, so, I, you know, it's up to you.
Well, I don't want to do anything on thinking about it. I want us to be accurate in what we do and why we do it.
So are we not going to?
You want to put it back on, on Tuesday, Judge, and cancel the one that we voted on and change it to another one? On the same agenda item?
I want to hear Tuesday, I'm at my investment conference. I mean, you can do without me here, but-
We can do it. You're doing it here.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you just put it on as an action, action item to amend or revoke, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
The same agenda item, we can figure it out.
Yeah. We'll do that.
Okay. So there's no action on the-
No action.
No action. We're on item eleven that we don't.
We're on eleven.
We're on eleven, and that's yours also, by-
Yes, sir.
Discuss approved, disapproved, county treasurer's report.
Yes, I've given them, to them last week, Tuesday, I guess it was, because you weren't in, Pete were not here, we, they put it back on the agenda for today.
Do we have the report?
Yes, sir, that green folder and so on, you, I gave it to you last week, Tuesday, everyone.
I have to look it up with Pete, I apologize. I had one of my trucks break down, and it was taking the floors over in Seraphord, and it's in there, so. It was taken yesterday.
Fords never break down.
I know this one, I don't know why, what happened to that one?
Well, this, this one is, uh, most easy to read through the call.
Okay.
What is important, Davis today? Did you get this one there?
No, that's bills, I think. Uh, no, I did not give that to you. Okay, I didn't give it to you.
By, you know, on, on your report, you're- By, you know, on your report, you're, I guess, the longest page in each, at the end of each tab is, I guess, like I say, I'm looking December the 14th accounts. You got your general ledger, bank balance, outstanding checks, tax money, money received, not deposited, miscellaneous, maybe not deposited, not received, general ledger, bank, and indifference.
Right.
So, you know, I guess the questions I have is what is miscellaneous debt?
It could be with like the health reimbursement account. If someone makes their first $500 deductible and then they go to their next $500 deductible, it's automatically deducted from our account. It could be we ordered checks and that was debited from our account. And it wasn't- on things like that, the auditor's office do journal entries on those and the December ones when we were still learning how to do everything. So, that's why they're probably outstanding, but that's what miscellaneous debt usually is. I don't know other else to title.
You have like money received and not deposited.
That would be money that like the JPs brought into us on the last business day and didn't get into the bank until the first business day the next month.
Who is CP1L?
Count, Constable CP1 Leo Smith.
Okay.
The four constables in the sheriff's department have Leo's money that they get in or once a year. I'm not sure if they're still getting it in or not.
What about the credit cards? They're not listed here?
No, that's when we were, we went into a separate credit card account and Elaine had just started working for me in the middle of November and we were not getting those done. That's what Sylvia does now, is the credit card reconciliation.
Okay, but so you, you know, back in December, he says outstanding check 790,597 and you look in this thing and it found a bunch of outstanding checks.
Right. The first couple of months you're going to see are checks that from two or three or four years ago that we've done and cleared off the books.
Yeah, I was going to say that there's some for 2012.
Right.
And then how are the GEO funds? Where are they in this? You listed some outstanding checks from GEO.
Right, because we receive the money into the bank and we wrote the checks to them and they just hadn't cleared the bank yet. Or some of the outstanding deposits that are not received are GEO funds that checks were not written for yet. Michelle has to get the invoice from GEO before she can write those checks.
What kind of messed me up was I saw GEO here and it was in a December, in 2014 and then almost you got a total for $11,000, 11,877. Then you go to a GEO fund right below that account. It says 778,710.32 cents. Is that an outstanding check?
The seven, yeah. We could have, you're going to see, I think in February, there's like $4 million of outstanding checks and those are GEO's alone.
The 2014 check?
The 2014 or in that $11,000, that's a running outstanding check on those.
Well, when is this one outstanding?
The 790?
787, 78.
It's because the GEO hasn't deposited that check yet.
But what month is it? What year?
Oh, I'm sorry. December of 14. I see what you're saying.
As we talk about dealing with banking issues, and I'm not sure it's legal, but at one time at least in the past because of the same sort of things, I did it. Is it possible that we could print or have printed on the checks that go out, a closure date voided after 90 days? I don't know if that's legal or not, but somehow it seemed like we need to keep people from having, using checks as their savings account if you would have it such.
We have it on the checks and I think the older checks might have that on it, but we do not have a, part of our negotiations with the bank, it does not say that after 90 days they won't honor it. So, that may be something that we need to negotiate with the bank. Because I called, remember calling Lillian Sakula on that and telling her there was an outstanding check. She said, "Well, we don't have it as part of your contract to not honor checks after 90 days."
Judge, you know banking law. Could we do something like that? Would that make life easier?
I don't know if it'd make life easier. I probably could need to.
Yeah, you can do it. We could have it printed on the checks. It used to in the old ones and I think maybe our hand checks might still have that on there.
Well, it would just urge people to go ahead and push them on through and I don't know. It worked in my situation, but-
Another thing we also need to do, and I think the tax office does this, they set a limit on how much refund. We wrote a check debit over .34 cents that came back because the address was wrong. We have to send it again.
If you look on the list of outstanding checks, there are a lot of nominal amounts that were written. Two cents, $2, $3, $0.60.
$6, yes. Well, $6 I think the jury ones.
Most everyone has, or most all other counties have a minimum amount that will be allowed for refunds. I thought at one time the board had set it at $5, but Carol researched the records and couldn't find it. I wouldn't recommend and have requested it be on the agenda, but it didn't make it, that the minimum refund issue would be $10.
Yes, I agree to that. Except of course, except for the jury checks because those are $6, but for refunds-
Well, those aren't refunds.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we had the audit done and we talked about the bank reconciliation statements and they said that there was a number that would be our working number, I guess, from 74, 8,000 something. What that amount is?
It's like 8709.
870647.
87.
0647. Now, that is just for the 1,00292 account, the general fund account. They also identified two differences in the APCA and the PCA accounts. I don't have those with me, but those reconciliations are not included in any of this either or any of the others.
Okay, I don't know. Maybe I'm bank stupid, but the 8706.47 was our working balance to start with. I mean, that's our like, that's like our zero, I mean, for discussion. But yet, in December, they shows 833409 and then on your numbers, then again, on 15th of March, it says 833685. So, are we not off?
Well, then it could be, I just need to go back and double check my outstanding checks, make sure we put the right dollar amount on those.
I mean, that's kind of what I'm wondering is because we should be looking for that before we get too far down the road.
Correct. We should improve our situation, not-
Yeah. Because I remember that guy made a comment. He said, "You want to stay south of that number, not go above that number." Well, we're nowhere close. We're 400 something bucks off somewhere.
Right. And it could be credit cards, too.
This one isn't.
But do you break the credit card?
The other two are positives.
My JP, we don't do those.
Yeah, they are. They're all.
I think if I remember right.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I will say after Bai gave me this packet, I did review the reconciliations and on each month I gave her a list of concerns or questions that needed clarification. She returned some of those to me on the 28th, some on the 29th, and some on June 3rd. I completed the review last night and I need to make a listing again back to her of some additional clarifications from what answers she gave me originally. Again, these are only the 292 account.
Yeah, but we need to make sure all the accounts show the proper amount.
Right, and some of them are in and out. So, I can print those up, all the burden accounts where you want me to, but-
Because when I went to Addis Ababa County and met with Ms. John Jack or-
Pavilic.
Pavilic, rather, yeah. Her and Laura and Mr. Ray.
Sam.
And he said, I asked him how they reconcile their accounts. And he says, "She prints out her end of the mud thing and brings it to me. I put mine out and looked at it and the match were good." I mean, but-
But our system, my system is the same as her, as Luana's system. The only thing that's going to be different is the reconciliation that y'all requested in there. That's the only thing that I do, basically reconcile the make statements to make sure everything's received in or accounted for.
So, I guess my question is, when do we get to say we actually are looking at a corrected bank statement?
Well, apparently she has questions and I'm not going to be here next week, so I don't pan into that. She got the reconciliation when y'all got them on Wednesday.
Because also too, aren't we supposed to put the, your bank statement, I mean, your bank, that one sheet that you gave us, the position of the county, aren't we supposed to put that in the paper?
Either in the paper or on the county website. But I don't do that until you approve it, so.
Well, this, this is something to get approved because you're on to us. Person's on.
Yes, I guess so. I didn't, didn't realize she had questions or-
And you're not going to be here next week.
And I, and the March one, I didn't get there until Wednesday and that was, I kind of forgot about. It's at my desk. But I gave her the other two Thursday afternoon. She came 3:30, 4 o'clock Thursday afternoon with some questions on two of them. And I think Friday was, later Thursday, she gave me the other ones.
And some of the original questions that I had given you haven't been answered either, so.
Are still in all the entries?
Correct.
I thought I'd answered them.
No action?
No.
Okay, so I will not be here on Tuesday's meeting then, so we'll have to put it the next time we have a meeting.
Do you consider going to wherever you're going more important than record filing the county records?
It's my investment officer conference and we have to have 15 continuous hours each year and this is the only conference that I am scheduled to go to.
There are other conferences?
No, not for the investment officer. It's, there are certain hours that we have to have and this is the only class that they operate on. Like my treasurer's conference, we have like two conferences a year, one in April, one in August. We can get hours for those. And the Public Funds Investment Act, I can get some of my hours on those, but I have to have 20 for treasurer, 15 for investment officer, and 10 with the Public Funds Investment Act. And this conference here is the one that I have to get to for that one because I have to keep up my certification.
This is an aside, but have we interviewed a chief financial officer? Has that been advertised or interviewed?
I haven't been asked that.
No.
It was advertised. I think they interviewed one person that had any interest.
Have you ever set a salary for the financial person? You rarely set a salary.
I don't think so.
There's a salary in the budget. I want to say it's $60,000.
Item 12 on the agenda is an executive closed session authorized by section 551.071 of the Texas government code for consultation with county attorney and outside counsel regarding the Hancock Malone pending in state district court, Karnes County, Texas, offered by Michael Shosse. That'll be, will go in my office here. It will be herb and the Shosse and the court members.
What's the matter? You're about going safe, safe going?
We can call you if you need to go.
What are you doing here, pal?
No, I believe it was 60 because it was less than me. And it may be 62, 63, something like that, but I know it was less than my salary. And there has been discussion of not doing that because what they had originally thought would be part of those job duties are my job duties. So, therefore, overlapping services and they're not necessarily necessary for it if the, I'm trying to be politically correct, if the treasurer gets on board and lets them down and if they enjoy this establishment.
If that issue was-
So, I think that's why they're not taking action on that. Things that we had, we interviewed two. One was nowhere near having any type of thought process to be able to do. Another one, personal experience, but some of the references that were given weren't entirely favorable, so.
Actually, what they would do, and again, now since they're going to create a HR person specifically that'll even take other things away from the CFO, so the things that would be available to be done, I mean, the only other thing that might, that office might take over would be the investment officer provision. But, you know, that's a nominal claim considering the versatility of our investments.
If I understand you correctly, it looks like there will be a crack in the bank in September at the base of that question.
If I understand you correctly.
That's right. That is a correct understanding.
We probably be political.
Next.
I-
I know.
Preparing the waste.
Right. I haven't given everyone that I finished last.
Yeah, hopefully Karen can read my writing. But if I put the numbers in another city, that means that I actually was able to go into their record and see they moved from Harms County to the same one. Now, there's a couple of them I think that I did things, and I said I'm not sure it's the right one. And then some of them, of course, will not register because they were estates or businesses or whatever. So hopefully y'all can read my writing, I know it's pretty bad, but if you have trouble, you know, just send it back to me and ask me, Karen, what is this meeting?
Okay, good deal.
Thank you so much. No problem.
He was walking, I swear I'm not making this up, walking between the junior high and the old South Valley group. House is there. Unless I'm just remembering this.
Yeah, that's the problem, yesterday it just means almost forty-five minutes just to get through the. See, and it's not just once, and then it's not just.
We didn't get some.
Ten minutes just to stop. But I mean, that's, I couldn't understand it, I knew they sounded like it's right. We just kept, and it never went fast. No, this was like.
Or you could go, but it's not done, kind of cost eighty-seven to. Eighty-seven's fast.
Well, right here, if you go through, if you go through Pennebury and everything, and yet right there, what is it, Officer Valace though?
Yeah, that's where Chip goes to Pavelik. Yeah, eighty-seven.
And it'll bring you right there.
Yeah, go up to Pavelik. Oh, I feel like, I mean, it's kind of a question for.
Yes. It's actually, that's what I've been reading.
Oh, gosh, I know. Anyway, Mr. Big, what about, what's next in this picture? Oh, we can see this color.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of, we're not elderly, but you know, what did, what did it do?
And oxygen, I was like, oh, it's not for people on, like, there.
Oh, yeah, it's all the way to the other side of the wall, too. Like right there where you charge the old ten dollars, that's like where they stop.
Oh, I view that, I can't. Well, they were there, they were eleven to forty-four, I don't know, they were just patch, I had to stop. Oh, really, it's on a flashing light. Well, the girl, I'll be back. Thank you so much for doing this.
Oh, you're welcome. It's, the new system allows us to easier search the entire state than just start down, and so it's kind of cool. And we can, we're gonna be able to find more duplicates that way, too, putting in new applications, because we'll search the state, well, no, they moved from somewhere else. We're not putting them in as a new voting, we're gonna cancel them, you know, bring them over here. So it's, it's real cool, like, they're really effective. I turn it on, but I'm not set. I found out, nobody else, I think I was on.
You're probably. I wear, I couldn't, uh, go here a person.
Three, already? And we haven't even gotten an email this episode.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, and I need dates. I would get that, and I also didn't get the. I did not get the letters.
Did you get this agenda?
I did.
See, initially I wasn't on her list, I bet she used her old list, because then she added me. I meant to come over and ask. So I got a couple of things I was considering.
But yes, and I don't think, I think they're gonna have to dismiss and come back. And he cannot leave today to work his thing without saying yet, because that's what they're gonna come back to. And it has to.
That's what I said, initially, I thought we were writing too much. I do that all the time, trust me, it's hard to have the name Karen and work with Harms County. Try every guy. You ever see something that says Karen's County, I didn't do it in front of you, I promise.
That's, that's number one title for me, too.
That agent wants to have a court that. I think that would be kind of a, a serious.
No, yours is down there like that because neither of you are.
Everybody just really just loves to, because I look there and bring those.
Exactly. It's the.
Say something like, say something like, say something like a billion dollars in.
The whole.
The whole, oh, yeah.
We need more. The town hasn't been able to. You know, the same as the month was. And that's happened.
This is the second time.
Yes, I mean, it. See, I think they're too far.
No, it's, it's, it's a lot. I'm sorry, these people that study the audience, they just, they are, they're too hard, they're too hard, they do. It would go so much smoother.
All right.
And they didn't have to separate, they'd have to separate. Operating orders. And what else, I would just. Ten minutes, I'm making this decision. Um, I love some. I said, I'm taking this a little bit, and you're like, I don't want to do that. I say, well, I'm not sure why.
I don't pretend, I don't, any.
How can a lawyer tell things what to say? That's not my legal. He's the only person that he puts something to you and say, you know.
I do all the time. I do, you don't tell each other, you don't, it's over, it's over.
They're almost the same. I mean, make it.
Oh, yes, I do, of course. He told you that they think he's like, you know, we all have, we all have it.
And then it'll show up, because you are about to.
Please tell me that.
That's a joke, but not real. Of course, I ran on the vote. But I didn't get, there were more votes, and I'm like, oh, I'll pick the twelfth. But also people, what's free ticket?
Well, I also didn't, I, I actually, which I'm on there as, as elected, and nobody had it, never. Maybe at the primaries, I think we were on there, but on the final one, we just elected, you know. But at the end, we didn't, so we did not.
Oh, okay.
And I had a couple of people who complained about that, but I don't see the point, I mean.
I mean, a riot, a riot has to file, don't they?
Yes, yes.
A friend of mine called me the day of election, he said, oh, is this, how do you still make emails? I'm like, what? You're the pole.
They can put it in there, but it doesn't go in here, I mean. As we want to say.
So if somebody files as a riot, is there maybe one ballot?
It is not, it is not, but I have to put the list of riots on the machine. Okay. It has to be posted, and so those people can vote. And then also, I guess somebody just better spell something that you could tell there, okay, we have the count.
Yeah, exactly.
If they put anything else, it would just go into, you know, the trash, you know, we hear names we can't. It would consider it a hundred.
Think about doing it, I said, go ahead and do it. I said, you better do it, you say you wish you would, but.
It's happening. It's not here, I mean, I've seen it.
We're gonna grab it later on a lot.
What? I don't know.
It's a way you stand the rest of your life. But just make a little stuff.
Oh, you too, you, you send us. For a little cup sale lady check, a bank has no obligation. Your honor's check is over six months old. Right. So you can put ninety days on there. Because back in the olden days, like, my, my bank is gonna have.
I did too.
You, you looked at every check, and you looked at every date you there, but as soon as you're out, it's all, and it's up to the county.
Now, exactly, my check.
And so it would be up to you and me to.
Or there's times I've given Cory, you know, my checks and like, he just signs it, so there's no, it can't sign on my account, and he never gets. How do I, or come back and see if I protested.
Yeah, put in your thirty days.
Other than that, we have it, other than that. That's just saying, you know, then like. Plates or something, I mean, it was like.
It was something that she, I told her, she was. And I said, Jimmy, for dollars or what? She said, I can document it through the internet, but I was like.
I was like, what are you, are you serious? Do you think somebody was close? Because what if they were? I would let, if I really felt like I didn't win, I'd let you walk out, and you walk Brendan's.
You know, she. I did, I was like, Brenda. Because they go on. Do you know about? I'm sorry.
And that's like the first time she's done that, I think, even with her.
I think she does, but she's. She's.
Because the other day, she just. And maybe it's. And she didn't.
Make those a little shorter, you can go right on. Who's that?
I'm planning for more rain, you know.
Oh, is that it? Judge, you're still going to treatments?
Yeah. He is, that's right, maybe. We're, we've moved to item thirteen of the agenda, which is to reconvene in open session. Uh, there would be only a discussion related to Hancock versus Malone, pending in state district court, Carls County, Texas, offered by Michael Shawsee. Uh, there's nothing to discuss further. Uh, that being said, we have moved to item fourteen.
No decision was made. Like, no decision was made?
Yeah, Judge, would you just note for the reference, no action?
No action was taken in the, in the, uh, executive session. That's all we need to say. That's all we need to say, just, we took no action in the executive session. That said, uh.
I move adjourned.
All, all it's saying was signified by getting.
Leaving.